Call the meeting to order at six o'clock and let's do these pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands our nation under God, in his own liberty and justice for all. Okay. And here's where it's gonna get a little bit confusing because we got some adjustments to the agenda and Liz sent out an agenda with a couple corrections. So Matt, correct me if I did anything wrong, but I think I'm on top of it. Uh, we're, I'd like to make the motion to move business item J one forward to be addressed after item C adjustments. I'm just gonna lump all these together and make it a little quicker. Um, and amend J, uh, new business item one to include an updated version of attachment J one, uh, which was distributed with the addendum. Uh, also add J, new business item five, RFQ for Sanford Pride Elementary, an attachment J five. Uh, also amend, uh, section O, staff nominations, item two, uh, with changes of the na- type of name of contract. And that whereas where we had originally headed down for first year continuing, and that's gonna change to a third year probationary contract uh, because there was some, uh, confusion as to exactly how the changes to the state law affected that. So that has been corrected to be in line with, uh, these state requirements. And then also, uh, staff nominations, item three, uh, which would be, I believe that's the same deal, correct? Or is that changing? That was...
That is the continuing, that's the professional staff being nominated for continuing contracts.
Oh, is it just a difference of some of the names switched over? Okay.
Yeah, yes, we had to divide out those names. So that's the, yeah.
Got you. Thanks, Matt. Um, and then section O, staff nominations, item four. Is that a change from what the original was, Matt?
Uh, no, just in the number, uh...
Okay.
Yeah.
Because if you had to separate out the ones for continuing contracts. Thanks, Matt. Um, so that's the, uh, the motion. Do we have a second? Second from John. Does everybody understand it? Any further clarification?
I think we'll just roll through.
All in favor? All in favor? Now I gotta keep track of what I just changed, so it's all on me. You guys get it easy. Okay.
Amy's selling those.
Huh?
Amy's taking notes.
Yeah, so if I get off track now, Amy, let me know.
Sure.
Okay, so we just did that. So now we are going to move, we're gonna go straight to item, uh, J one, new business, which was, that's the MOU for adult ed and Flanagan's Driving School. Mr. Nelson, the floor is yours.
Okay, so as I, uh, work to bring that up, um, I want to, um, introduce, um, Nicole Ivy, the Director of Sanford Community Adult Education. And she is back to, um, she presented at her last meeting. Then we were trying to make some changes, uh, or recommended changes, uh, just recommended additions, really. I think the document itself was okay. And so, um, that's what we were looking to do. And so I'll introduce Nicole to be able to come back and speak to the memorandum of understanding for the driver's edu- education program.
Thank you, Matt. Um, so yes, I did revise the MOU that you saw at the last meeting. Um, and pulling up the agenda for tonight, I don't believe that the updated MOU is included. I think that may be the original version. Um...
I, I, okay.
In the addendum.
Okay, here we go. Yep.
Yeah.
Great. So the three major changes, um, recommended by the school committee at the last meeting. The first was to, um, ensure that there was sufficient notice for, um, the dissolution of the agreement should either party, uh, want to pursue that. And so we agreed on a thirty day timeframe, no less than thirty days. You'll see that under term of agreement. Um, the other suggestion made by the school committee was to include language around if there were any issue with our building, would we be liable, um, and responsible for securing an alternate facility for Flanagan's Driving School? We agreed that we would, in fact, not be responsible with that. Our monthly compensation would be adjusted to reflect, um, any sort of fiscal responsibility on behalf of Flanagan's to secure an alternate facility should our building be compromised. And then the third and final recommendation was, um, just in the event that Flanagan's were to change ownership, that we would have the ability to dissolve the partnership. And that's also included here on the, those, all three of those recommendations are included on the page that Matt has up in front of you.
This is the only thoughts I had. I'm okay with that. I appreciate Nicole looking at that and making some corrections. I think it just protects both parties. So thank you for doing that.
Of course.
No, it makes sense. I missed the last meeting, but I looked over and, yeah, I was glad to see that term of agreement. I would've had the same, same input, so. You always wanna make sure you give yourself an out.
Yeah, it's gotta be mutual, so that, that covers that.
Any other questions or? Because we need, we need to approve it, right?
Yeah.
Do you like to read the motion, Mr. Riz?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the memorandum of understanding between the school property and Flanagan's private school as, as the amended version talks about.
Okay, I'll second that. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? All in favor? That's unanimous, Matt. Good job, Nicole, as always.
Nicole, you're always welcome to stick around for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
Just turn the camera off and go do something else.
Thanks, Matt.
Uh, cool. I, it's a great partnership, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to see us get to the point where maybe it's offered, like, at the high school.
Yeah.
Because I know a lot of, uh, high schools do that, so.
Jonathan, are we supposed to see all, everybody who's watching?
Um, or to... Is that, is that, something like that, or is that blocking the main screen too much?
Or just a view, um...
Oh, you mean like a, uh...
As if they were in the audience, we could see. View on top.
Gallery?
Gallery, yeah.
Do you like the gallery?
Yeah, everybody does.
Is that entirely? Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, now then, let's go. Let's see, adjustments, we did J, which we moved up. Uh, approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve minutes from April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one executive session at four thirty. Uh, do we have a second? Awesome. Second from Mr. Uh, from Mr. Mitz. Uh, any discussion? Yeah, all in favor? All in favor? That's unanimous, Matt. Uh, okay, public comments. Uh, do we have anything, Matt, that people sent in by email and stuff and wanna put out there for this, or?
No, we have not received anything.
Don, I, as, I think, as a public comment, I wouldn't mind having something regarding the schedule that you're talking about. Can I do that?
Yes, sure.
It's just, you know, it was asked me to review the code of ethics for the, for the school committee, but it just reminded me as I reviewed it that, um, we all have agreed that at all times, think of children first and base my decisions on how they will affect children, their education and their training. When I think about the schedule, it's about the students and that's where we need to focus. I just wanna remind us that we agree to do that.
So we're just gonna look at that stuff. Okay. Let's get it. Uh, the only other thing I would mention is I did get an email from a parent about the musical and, um, what they deemed is some profanity in one of the numbers. I forwarded it to everybody here and Mr. Uh, Mr. Nelson as well. I'm not sure exactly what the procedure is as far as approvals and checks for that, but, uh, we'll look into it and go from there. So then we have communications. You've got none, Matt? Nothing's come in since then?
No.
Uh, yeah, uh, okay, so committee reports. Uh, Mr. Nelson, you're up with construction updates.
Sure, I'll start with the high school and the technical center. I'll start with, um, the, um, arbitration update with one of the subcontractors. Uh, our legal counsel's participated in phone calls with the subcontractor and the contractor. Um, with that, if you remember, this started out as a lawsuit, um, brought on, um, by a subcontractor through the contractor to us. We tried mediation, but it failed. And so in the terms of the contract, we demanded arbitration. Uh, so as we're moving forward towards arbitration, um, the subcontractor has dismissed the architect, uh, La Valley Brenziger Association from the, associates from that lawsuit. So they're gonna be, uh, now free to be, uh, with us uh, in the event that they are subpoenaed or have to provide a deposition. So the subcontractor's claims are gonna flow through the contractor, uh, for that. And so right now, um, we were worried that the subcontractor really wanted to make this maybe a more costly endeavor with a lot of, uh, subpoenas and a lot of depositions. But, uh, the legal, uh, people have got together and agreed on a general schedule and exchange of information that our legal counsel feels, uh, looks good. With that, right now, we can expect arbitration to take place at the end of October and, uh, in all likelihood, last, uh, two or three, uh, days, uh, before a decision is reached. Um, basically, the arbitrator identifies the issues, they'll hear both sides, and then they'll make a decision, um, for that. Our role right now in the meantime will be to provide documents and work with the architect to provide information as needed to our legal counsel. Any questions on that?
Uh, I don't see any, Matt.
Okay, moving right along, um, a- as I mentioned at the last meeting, we, uh, sent word based on the terms of the contract to the contractor to let them know for the, uh, items on the, uh, punch list that have not been addressed, that we're looking to perform those, uh, owner perform work or for us to be able to get subcontractors, uh, to be able to do that. So we've started ahead on that list. I've, uh, communicated with Don Nichols, our facilities and maintenance director, and, uh, he started working on that list. He's also, uh, reached out, uh, to Lance Whitehead, the lead architect, to provide the vendor and supplier for a list of materials that are gonna be needed for some of those, uh, punch list items. Uh, G and E Roofing is scheduled to be here at the end of the month to look at some of the roofing concerns that are on that list. So we are continuing to move along with that. Um, congratulations are in order for the high school and technical center, uh, project uh, for winning not one, but two American Institute of Architects Design Awards. The first award is through, um, the American Institute of Architects in New Hampshire, and that's part of their two thousand twenty awards. Normally what you would have is a, a banquet and an acceptance for the award, uh, last winter. But as we all know, COVID nineteen had other plans for that. Uh, so as an alternative approach, they created a video with the architect, and that's recently posted online. Um, and I, uh, I shared that earlier with the school committee, and we'll try to get that onto our website as well. We were also recently notified that, uh, the high school technical center, uh, building project won an AIA Maine Award for two thousand twenty-one. So that's gonna be, uh, announced publicly or was announced today. We still have the possibility to win yet a third award. That would be the People's Chief Choice Award in Maine. And that's basically one where the public can vote for their favorite submission through the AIA Maine. Uh, with that, whoever gets the most votes wins that award. So, um, I know obviously, uh, this is great, uh, news and, and well deserved. Lance Whitehead, our lead architect, has framed the award for the AIA, uh, New Hampshire Award and, uh, is waiting to get the Maine Award so we can do the same thing. And then we may get together, uh, with the core building committee and, uh, for a brief presentation, um, for those. And as Lance Whitehead said, "Great design comes from great clients," which we had in droves with the school administration as a leader, the state as a partner, and the core building committee as a high energy steering group. We accomplished, uh, something great. Although the construction phase of the project has been trying to all of us, uh, we should never forget that we were able to create something extraordinary. It is a great school. Thank you all for allowing us to be part of that. So kudos, um, for that. Any questions on, uh, the high school technical center?
Looks like we're good, Matt. Thanks.
Uh, real quick, Margaret Chase Smith School, if you remember right now, an outstanding item had was the reseating. We couldn't do the reseating last, um, we couldn't do the reseating this fall because, uh, with COVID nineteen, uh, we needed to be able to utilize all outside area and space. Um, and still with COVID nineteen carrying over, we weren't able to do anything this spring, especially with the, uh, lack of rain. It probably wouldn't have been helpful anyways. So also looking ahead to also needing that outdoor space uh, in an attempt to, uh, have, um, the contractor and the subcontractor uh, be able to move on and not have that holding over their head. We've agreed on a credit back in a total of eleven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. And that's everything for weed control, aeration, watering, reseating, and also some mowings. So, uh, good news on Margaret Chase Smith School. Any questions there?
Yeah, Matt, real quickly, will we be doing it this summer?
No, right now, the plan is not to do it this summer until we have a better handle on, um, what we're gonna need for space uh, to be able to, um, bring all of our kids back to school next year in person. Uh, so, uh, I think it's prudent to be able to hold off on that until we have a better, uh, idea of that. And then we can be able to kind of plan that out because we would have to be able to kind of close that, the spaces right down.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, that's it, Matt.
Okay, I'll move over to Sanford Pride Elementary, um, school. Uh, given some update on the escalation costs for labor materials that, uh, have come from the contractor on behalf of, um, one major subcontractor. There are actually three separate subcontractors with escalation claims. Uh, but right now, we are handling the one that's the largest claim. Uh, if you remember, this is due to the asbestos delays at Sanford Middle School. Um, with that, if you look at it from our approach, as I've mentioned before, our legal counsel believes that the escalation costs are, um, consequential and waived, uh, and they're not allowed by the contract. Um, so our legal counsel has spoken with, uh, the legal, uh, the attorney of the subcontractor. And in there, uh, in our legal counsel's view, this just boils down to, uh, who's right and who's wrong. And in a situation like that, it's probably best for a judge to decide. As an alternative, we could go to mediation arbitration route, but, uh, that, as people know, is more expensive. And so our legal counsel believes that we should, uh, let a judge decide. Uh, if the judge does rule in our favor, then the, um, claim goes away. And same with the other subcontractors, they would not be able to pursue escalation charges against us. But if the judge was to rule against us, then we could prepare to receive those other escalation charges from the subcontractors. So really, the fundamental, uh, the fundamental question comes down to, is this escalation cost conse- consequential? Or is it direct? And if it's not consequential, we lose. Uh, I do wanna point out, uh, to let people know that we can't, uh, litigate who was at fault for the delay. If you remember, it was the asbestos, uh, at Sanford Middle School causing the delay. We believe that that was the contractor's fault, but that's really not something that we would be allowed to bring into, um, part of the, um, we wouldn't be able to, to bring that up, um, for that. And so, um, we have two defenses, as I mentioned, uh, consequential or the delay was not the fault of the Sanford School Department. And if we were to take that approach, that would be very costly to mediate and arbitrate. So according to our legal counsel, we have really three options. Let the judge decide, or we can try to settle, or we can arbitrate. As I mentioned, that cost would be higher than the escalation claim itself. So, uh, where we are right now, our legal counsel recommends reviewing the claim. They're reviewing it right now in the backup to see if there are any opportunities to negotiate and to see where the subcontractor, subcontractor may be vulnerable, uh, and what may be possible. And so they're also gonna review, our legal counsel will also review our position just to make sure it is still correct from a legal point of view. Uh, right now, that claim is for a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And so that, we also have to consider if we do wanna settle. Um, with that, remember, if we cut to the chase and let a judge decide, that's all or nothing, um, for that. So, um, in asking, uh, where we are, our, our legal counsel is, um, feels that, um, the odds are seventy-five percent that we prevail. But he also mentioned that the, um, subcontractor also probably feels the same way. So that's where we are right now. I will continue to keep people updated. If there are people who want to, um, if there's any people who have questions about that or, uh, thoughts, uh, let me know.
Any questions, comments?
I would work towards a settlement as soon as you can. It's a hundred thousand dollar problem. It sounds like, you know, based on what we've gone, gone through with the hundred and twenty-five, thirty million we've been kicking around the last two years. I would get that off your plate as soon as you can.
Yeah, that's, as I said, whether, we're, we're investigating that now to see, uh, when we went through, uh, initially, uh, with the mediation, we went in there with the idea to settle and they were just, the, the other side was really not interested. So as we get closer here and be able to nail that down, I think that's one of the options that we're looking at, Jonathan, for sure.
But it would actually probably be more than that if you don't, because there's those other two that are sitting out there.
Yes. Yeah, and, and, and I think right now, if we were to settle, then obviously, I think we could probably expect to hear from those other people as well.
My only comment would be, just amazes me how it just turns into a big legal battle. It's, I would think that the contracts on the front could be a little more tight, but it is what it is. And that's the world of construction, so. Um, anything else with the elementary schools, uh, Matt?
Yeah, I just wanna give people an update. The project, uh, appears to be following suit with the schedule. Area A looks like it'll be ready at the end of this month with the other areas following right along, uh, through the month of June, uh, for that. We did use, um, local bond funds to help with a new controls package, uh, for that. And we also did some, uh, window shades, um, uniform window shades throughout the building for that. Uh, but everything else is coming along, uh, nicely. So, um, that's the update.
Knock on wood, Matt. Knock on wood.
Yep.
Okay, cool. So that wraps up, uh, elementary.
Matt, one thing that got brought up tonight, today at the wellness committee meeting was, um, the, um, was it not handless? The, uh, yeah, the water fountain. The water fountains that basically...
Touchless.
Touchless, that, that's the word. The touchless, um, water fountains. And just, um, you know, realizing that we should probably just make sure, um, that in the new, while they're still under construction, that they're, that they're putting some of those in the cafeteria so that kids have that option of going to fill their water bottles during the lunch period and not having to go down the hall and this and that. Especially if they don't like them. Right. Or canned. I don't know, I don't know if that's already in the plan, but just, it was just one thing that got brought up today.
Okay, great. I can follow up on that.
Okay, cool. Uh, so let's move on. We got the, uh, Sanford Performing Arts, uh, committee update. Anything else?
I do. I've got some interesting numbers from, uh...
We love interesting numbers.
Yes, interesting numbers from the show must go on this weekend. Um, I hope many people went to see it. I was there on Friday and I thought it was fantastic. I know, Don, you went Thursday. Amy went every single night because Jack was there, so, um, thank Grace.
Thank Grace, it was true.
Yes. Okay, so, uh, twenty-one student performers on stage, six student technicians behind the scenes, and six orchestra musicians. Six hundred and twenty-six people attended live in person over the three shows and over six hundred and fifty views of the livestream on WSSR's YouTube channel. Zero cases of COVID transmission during rehearsals or performances due to strict masking and spacing procedures. And, uh, we just announced a two-week theater camp for high school students this July through the school department. And just to know what's coming up in the future, we've got dance recitals by Dance Studio of Maine South, Phoenix Elite Dance Company, Jazz Happening Dance Academy, and Future Dance Academy. As well, we have many year-end academic celebrations like Sanford Community Adult Education Graduation, the York County Community College graduation, and the Sanford High School Senior Awards Night.
Well, the, the SPAC is back in business.
Mm-hmm.
It's very exciting. It was...
Live and well.
It, it was really nice to see people back out doing stuff. The kids are super talented.
Yeah.
Um, you know, if you're watching it at home and you didn't get a chance to see it, go to WSSR's YouTube channel. It's up there.
Yeah, it's worth a watch, for sure.
Oh, it's, it's very, it's, the whole thing's great. I didn't realize it was gonna be as much like a stage production. I didn't realize it was a full, I thought it was just gonna be singing and that's it, but...
Yeah.
It was great.
Yeah.
Great job on your solo, Grace. It was awesome. Great job.
Okay, so that's that. Um, WSSR TV, uh, nothing much to update there. We're continuing to work with the city to see how that's going. It sounds like they wanna transition more of their marketing stuff over. Uh, so we're working that out. We have a leadership meeting Thursday, and then next week we'll have a, um, steering committee meeting. Um, once I put that together, so. So that's that. Uh, anything with Delta, Mr. Mitz?
I'm sure prior discussion as well as due second is the graduation for Delta. Um, seven, uh, in, uh, for me, I said it'd be a live graduation, so that's kind of cool. And to reach out to Kendra Williams, too, who she's always supported over Delta, so, uh, give her a heads up.
Okay, if she's around, I'm sure she'd love to see that.
She said she's around.
Excellent. Okay, and let's move on to the superintendent's report. And the first thing we have is the student representative report. A Grace is here to do it live.
Yeah.
The floor is yours, Grace.
Sing it.
Is there a production going? I don't know if it's gonna dip and...
I think I forgot my costumes at home, so I might have to wait. Um, the only thing I have to report on is the show, obviously, this, this past weekend. And it was, it was pretty awesome to be back in there. It kind of started and is leading the path towards getting back to normal, I guess, is what I would call it. Because now that it's over, we're just, we're already one step ahead. We're thinking about next year. We're thinking about, like you said, the theater camps. Everyone's excited for that. And so I think just looking forward to the future and hoping that we're gonna have the rain loosened so that we can hopefully have no masks is our goal. But we can always dream for that. And so, yeah, that's the, that's really the only thing I have to report on.
Excellent. Thanks, Grace. Any questions for Grace? Put her on the spot, so she's here. You know we're good?
It's time a little bit already.
Uh, okay, Matt, uh, Sanford School news. The floor is yours.
Okay, uh, so news from Sanford Schools, uh, kind of be able to help us move, uh, through this. First off is the high school. Uh, congratulations to, uh, Azlin Warden, uh, for, uh, she is one of seven Maine seniors named U.S. Presidential Scholar semifinalists, uh, with that. And so she's one of seven throughout the state. Uh, that's a great honor. They're chosen on the basis of their accomplishments in many areas, including academic and art- artistic success, career in technical fields, leadership and involvement in school and the community, um, for that. And so out of three point six million graduating high school seniors from across the country, there are six thousand five hundred identified, and six hundred and twenty-five semi- semifinalists were selected, and, uh, seven of them are from Maine with that. So, uh, kudos to Azlin. Sanford Regional Technical Center, uh, one of the things that they do, um, is a student of the year. Normally, that's done with, uh, having a banquet for all the career and technical centers throughout the state of Maine. Uh, but, uh, obviously with COVID nineteen, that'll be a little bit different. And so for SRTC, uh, they come through in, um, a nomination and an interview before the selection committee, uh, for that. And so, um, these are students who represent, uh, many of the best qualities of students that attend SRTC. attend SRTC. And so the finalists for the SRT Student of the Year are from Noble High School, Cole Nevison, in the Automotive Collision Repair Program, homeschool student Noah Willett in Automotive Technology, from the Engineering Applications Robotics Program in Sanford High School, Jacob, and also from Sanford High School Provision Manufacturing Program, Landon, and from Trape Academy, Mary Lombardi, Engineering and Architectural Design Program. Oh, and actually, right now, she is the Student of the Year. So I gave the finalists, and then Mary Lombardi is SRTC Student of the Year for 2021. So congratulations to Mary from Trape Academy. From Sanford Middle School, congratulations are in order. This is coming from Tara Hool, the JMG Specialist. Want to congratulate Finley Watson and Mia Mondor. They came in first and second in the State of Maine Stock Market Game Competition, and Dustin Overton grabbed third place. So that's awesome that we were able to sweep first, second, and third out of 177 teams. Stock Market Game provides an introduction to the stock market that allows students a chance to paper trade with $100,000 while competing with schools all over Maine. Our students at the middle school were coached by Bill Bolio of Accenture Strategy and Consulting out of Boston, Massachusetts, and they will be recognized at virtual award ceremony this month, so I know where I might be going if I need some investment tips. There's a picture right there of our Stock Market Game winners for 2020, 2021. It was National Poem in Your Pocket Day, and so that was something where our middle school students had fun with that. Mr. Samborn said they were sneaking looks at their poems in his class, more proof that poetry is candy for the soul. We also had people in Mrs. David's homeroom class using watercolors to create symmetrical sea turtle drawings. In Mrs. Wyman's homeroom, they're making dragon eye artworks using their choice of media. Over at Carl J. Lamb School, right now, school counselor, Mrs. Scrimmon, is teaching responsibility to students. With that, and that's what she's using right here, is these questions and this conversation. There you can see it was Hero Day in Mrs. Badger's kindergarten classroom recently at CJL. And here is Bailey as she comes to school and demonstrating COVID. She is utilizing an air hug here as she's happy to see Mr. Eldred's phys ed teacher. Spirit Day was Alive and Well in Mrs. Gillis's class because every Friday, staff and students wear red, white, and/or black Sanford Spartan colors, show school spirit. And there is Kindness Grows in kindergarten. Some upcoming events here at Carl J. Lamb, their Color Fun Run Day will be Friday, May 14th, this coming Friday, then some other activities going on through the rest of the month. Over at MCS, their student ambassadors at MCS are third and fourth grade students. They help support the school day with daily activities, and they're the link between MCS and community members. They honor their school's core values, being respectful, responsible, and safe, representing the school. They meet once a week during the lunch block to plan a variety of different school activities. These are newly created positions to help students communicate effectively with other ambassadors as well as the entire student body for that. And there's a picture of our ambassadors right there at MCS. Past week in all of our schools was Teacher Appreciation Week, a big shout out and a big thank you to all of our PTAs throughout the district for all of their support and all of their efforts last week. A lot of different activities. Same thing happening over at Willard School. Last, last week there, each day, a Willard Kindness Club member helped with the morning announcements to thank teachers each day, and they did something neat there. The student leaders guided the staff throughout the building during a applause in the halls activity. This is a little bit of a reverse parade here where the staff do the parade to be recognized by the students. There they are, applause in the halls. A reminder from school nutrition, calling all for our high school, people at the high school after-school activities, there is the Spartan Super Snack Program that is available Monday through Thursday, and really this is trying to bridge that gap between after the school day and supper. And then, right now, last week was, last Friday was Food Service Hero Day, and here's School Lunch Heroes Day, and here's a nice little thank you from Liam. And at Sanford Community Adult Ed, they have partnered with SRTC and York County Community College and the Maine Quality Centers, and they are offering a certified welding program to qualified Maine State residents for free this summer. Limited space is available, and applicants are evaluated through some qualification criteria, so there's a link there for more information. People are interested in that. And so that is our good news.
That's, that's great news, Matt. I like Liam's introspection and evaluating. Okay, Matt, update on return in-person learning for next school year.
Sure, last Monday we had a workshop with the school committee. We covered a lot of ground. We talked about the Sanford High School, Sanford Regional Technical Center schedule. That'll be a focus of, or an item to discuss next week, next school committee meeting. But we also spoke, we got an update on the summer programming. Beth is going to do that later in her program, and we also talked about Cheryl Fornia did a nice job of going in and detailing what we've expended so far in our federal funds. And we also focused on our goal right next year of getting all of our students back in person learning for in-person learning next year, the 2021, 2022 school year, to get everyone back next year, five days a week. And so one of the things that, and I just want people to know, that workshop, we did record that, we've been working with Sarah Schnell, and that will be uploaded to YouTube. It's also got a link that we're posting on our school website as a news item. Sarah's also going to play it on Channel 26, and she's also looking into it to see if it can be updated to Town Hall streams for that. So we had a good workshop, but a big part of our focus for that was return to in-person learning. So I'm going to try to summarize that. Remember, we did receive significant funding, federal funding, and so what I have on the screen here is trying to move this around if I can to zoom in. There we go, and I'll try to be able to move this around, but we've got significant money. One of the things we're trying to do is be able to get all of our students back. The biggest challenge that we have is space in our schools to be able to do that, and so we have to be looking at additional space, and we also have to be looking at additional staffing to be able to do that. So at our elementary schools, we do not have plans next year to have pre-K classrooms next year, but we do have plans to utilize those classrooms in those spaces so that we can kind of space out for that. So I've kind of put together here a planning document that will show what we have and what we need throughout the district. This is kind of a working document for us. We've put together, we've been working at the central office level, and we've been working at the 18th level, trying to look at these things and identifying what it is that we're going to need and some, putting some cost to those. We are putting together an advisory committee that's going to be, that we'll be meeting on Tuesdays, starting tomorrow through the end of the school year, that is representative of staff throughout the district to help us be able to have this planning. If you look at MCS right now, we're looking at for additional staffing, we're going to need a kindergarten teacher, a kindergarten ed tech, a grade two teacher, a special education resource room teacher, an ed tech three for support and transition, and a social worker position with that. And so those additional staff costs come out to just under $450,000. And then as you go back and look, there's different technology needs, general supplies, curriculum needs, and we'll continue to be able to kind of update that as we go along with what is needed at MCS. We're going to need furniture for four classrooms. We do have the space for the four classrooms. We are also going to have the technology, and these are all going to be coming from the federal funds to be able to help us be able to do that at MCS. When we work down to Carl J. Lamb School, what we've identified there is a kindergarten teacher, a kindergarten ed tech, a grade four teacher, two grade three teachers, support and transitions, ed tech three for that, and special education teachers, special education ed tech, another special education ed tech. Those staffing will come up to estimated at just under $650,000. We are going to need technology for five teachers and four ed techs. As I said, the additional space is being utilized within, and some furniture need for six classrooms as we look, continue to move through there. Sanford Pride Elementary School, we're going to need a kindergarten teacher, a kindergarten ed tech, a grade one teacher, an IEP coordinator. Their staffing will come out to just under $280,000. We're going to need some technology, additional technology for three teachers, one ed tech. As I mentioned, that space will be incorporated within. At Sanford Middle School, from a staffing standpoint, that's where we have the biggest challenge right now, and so we need two grade five teachers, three grade six teachers, three grade seven teachers, three grade eight teachers, one self-contained special education teacher, one special education life skills teacher, two special education ed techs. And so for there, that staffing comes in at over $1.2 million. That's where space becomes an issue for us because we've got that space maximized throughout that building. We're still looking internally to see if there can be some sharing and some utilization of teachers on carts, but one thing that may need to be utilized is utilizing Willard School after Willard School moves out this summer to go to Sanford Pride Elementary. And so we put an estimated cost at that of $553,000, just under $554,000. Then if you look at the total cost there, you're almost under $1.9 million as we are looking at Sanford Middle School. Moving down to the high school right now, you're looking at additional staff there, an additional clinical supervisor per diem as a CNA, English Language Arts, we're going to need two teachers there, an art teacher, a social studies teacher, a math teacher, and a science teacher. We're going to need technology for those seven teachers there. Our high school and technical center is big enough where people can be able to work through carts and where the schedule does work for that to be able to be absorbed within. One thing that we've done here is knowing that there is going to be that staffing. We did get out in front of that. We have advertised for all of these positions, and our administrators and their hiring teams have gone to work here as we posted those positions, reviewing the applications so that we can get a head start to be able to fill. Right now, if you know, we have all of our students throughout the district who are interested in coming back for in-person learning four days a week, but we are maxed out. And so we still have a significant number of students. We have over 200 at the middle school, over 300 at the high school, who are still fully remote. They're learning, they are learning synchronously along with that. And we also have about 200 students at the elementary level, a combination doing the full separate Calvert Learning Program or doing our Sanford Remote Program, which is not synchronous to what's going on. So our goal is to be able to work hard, as I mentioned, to get all of those students back, those 700-plus students back, to be able to come back into in-person learning. For those 700 students, we've got a survey that we've been working on. We finalized that today, and our intent is to send that survey only to those people who are doing remote learning at this time so that we can kind of drill down to get an idea of why they're doing a remote learning and a general idea of what their plans are next year for planning. So we'll be sending that out tomorrow. I want to reiterate, that is just two people who are doing full, currently doing remote learning, and that will be due to come back on Sunday, next Sunday, to assist with our planning. So I'll turn it over, open it up, I guess, to Steve, Beth, and Cheryl to see if there's anything I missed or anything as I tried to summarize what's been going on in terms of us planning for next year.
I think you captured everything, Matt.
I think you captured everything, Matt. I think as I look at this, the biggest challenge will be staffing, staffing and space at the middle school.
Yep, and those are, we're, as I, we're working and identifying those. Usually we're in a situation where hiring is always a big, important part of what we do at this time of year, even more so now. We spent significant time at last week's administrator team meeting, really zeroing in on our hiring process. I did, I've started meeting with recommended candidates right now, and so you, the school committee will see next meeting as we're going to start bringing forward teacher nominations for you for the 2021, 22 school year. Does the school, are there any questions, thoughts, comments, concerns from the school committee?
The only thing I'd like to say, Matt, is like we discussed at the workshop last week, I think this is a really great job for you guys to lay this out there because I know when we were going through the budget process, there were a number of people that were like, hey, can we tap into that federal money? Can we tap into that federal money? This is really showing them how quickly that federal money is going to get used up to be able to, you know, give the, give the kids what they need next fall, be able to spread them out and give them more, you know, more one-on-one attention as much as we can. So I think you guys are doing a great job with this.
Yeah, as we, as we space them out, that helps, obviously that's going to lower the student-to-teacher ratios, so that's something that we'll be able to help. One thing that came up in the school committee workshop that is also an issue we're looking into is social emotional learning, how we can be able to come back and prepare and be work, be ready for that and staff for that because as you know, as the students are returning back to school, it's, it's been a challenging time, and that's something that we are able to try to look at as we are bringing that forward.
Questions, comments, anybody? Jonathan? We're allowed to go first?
Yeah.
So obviously you all echo the staffing concern. These are short-term, temporary positions, Matt? Is that right?
Yeah, that's a good question, Jonathan. Right now, probably the short answer is yes, but with an asterisk because with that, what happens is with the federal funds, we've got time to spend those. There are some that need to be expended by September of 2021, but the majority of that funding doesn't have to be spent until September of 2023. And so with that, that is buying us some time also so that, yes, we're looking at these as short time for, short term for one year, but we're not closing the door either on depending on what we have for funding and the success going forward. It is our hope that those positions will, if people are working out in those positions, that we'd be able to hopefully hire them on through attrition going down the line. So, yeah, there are the positions that you see here in this spreadsheet here, those are the additional positions that we're paying for federal funds, and so that they're not going to be becoming part of our regular school budget that would be creating a cliff down the line, but it is our hope that with other people leaving and other retirements that we will be able to keep people.
And Joey, the other Jonathan, or?
Yeah, so, you know, Matt, and just, I always talk of a slippery slope, so thin ice. When it comes to union negotiating, these teachers are one year at a time, they're not expected to be. They're not expected to be contracted. We just talked about the two-year commitment. I think you know where I'm going with this, I just don't want to get ourselves in a kind of a...
Yeah, no, you're wise to mention that, Jonathan. Remember, all of our teachers, whether they're being paid with federal funds or through the regular school budget, are probationary. And so as you come back with a probationary, you do have to be recommended to a second-year probationary for that. So those are some of the, I guess, safeguards that we have in place right now that if it does come into situations where there are positions that will, through the federal funds, that will not be going forward.
You have to follow the union salary ranges for this, correct?
Yes, yeah, and the numbers you have in front of you. Cheryl's done a really nice job of kind of putting some estimates together from when you're looking at salary and benefits. She didn't look at the low end of the scale, she didn't look at the high end. This is pretty much just an average that you see in front of you. As we will continue, for us in Sanford, we always want to hire the best candidates, and we'll continue to be able to do that. So these numbers that you see in front of you, assigned to staffing, are averages.
Thank you.
And real quickly, in our negotiations with the union, this discussion has been brought up on how we're working with the union on these jobs.
Good, thanks. Amy?
Um, so a couple of things, I just have a question about, you know, when I was looking at the elementary schools in particulars, and was going back to one of the February meetings and when we were talking to the school counselors and remembering the numbers, and actually went back to my notes to that meeting, and the ratios that one school counselor has at CGL in particular, because they have the higher numbers. I'm surprised, and I'm wondering why CGL doesn't have a a school counselor position open, just given the numbers and given, you know, the need that's going to be, you know, going to be warranted that coming in September, considering that it's an elementary school, right, all these little kids are coming.
Matt, maybe a question?
And I see there's a social worker at MCS.
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
So Amy, that the social work position is a position that's going to be district-wide. It's just listed under MCS for accounting purposes. But the, the thought process is, is the social worker would be based across all three elementary buildings and would go where the need is. So they may see more students at CGL than they do MCS, or they may see more students at MCS than they do CGL, be based on where the need is. Now, in terms of school counseling, one of the things that we're looking at is the art, music, health, and PE schedules at the elementary school. With the additional classrooms, we are concerned about the caseloads, in particular, our art and music people who travel. So we are looking at the specialist schedule to see what we have, to see if we need to add. But we're also doing the same thing with the school counseling positions, Amy. We may need to add a school counseling position, and what we're looking at is how do we do that effectively? Because splitting an elementary counselor under the current job functions across the three elementary schools is really an ineffective use to the person's time. But thought process, the elementary admin that we had last week was, do we look at adding a kindergarten school counselor devoted to kindergarten to provide classroom instruction in guidance, in school counseling for our kindergarten students, knowing that we're going to have students coming in that have never been in school before, they haven't had pre-K, social interaction has been limited? So that is in discussion, Amy, we just have not finalized that, those positions.
I see you're still thinking.
I am, just because I guess I'm not, I'm not in a hard time understanding why we haven't finalized it when we knew that there was a need in February. And I, I just think about one person with all of the needs that are, that are already now, let alone that are coming in September. And when you're having a ratio of one to four hundred and whatever for next year, then you're asking, you know, and then, then our hope is, because we all feel strongly about the SCL curriculum, and my understanding it was the school counselors that were going in the elementary classrooms to do those lessons, I'm not quite sure how one person can go into all of those classrooms, do lessons, and then be a school counselor dealing with family, you know, emergencies that come up, behaviors that come up and all that. To me, it, that would come to the very top of the list of the COVID funds to be used. And frankly, all of the elementary schools, to be honest.
I think for me, Amy, what I hear Steve saying is that that is on the table, but they're evaluating the best way to do it. So I don't think you can look straight just at the ratios, well, there's four hundred kids in that school. But how do you know how many of them really need the services? And that's just my perspective on it.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think, Amy, we are, it's been on the table since we knew we had these federal funds coming. I mean, our first step is to get that social work position that's hired because that is going to be, that's going to alleviate some of the pressure off our elementary school counselors because we've never had that before. So that's one of the ways in which we can alleviate pressure from our school counselors. Now we're looking at, you're right, that being able to do classroom guidance and do the normal stuff that a school counselor is asked to do, that's a very taxing and very, it's a big, lot of shoes to fill. There's a lot. And so that's why we're talking about adding that strictly classroom guidance position to be able to do that work. It's just a matter of, Amy, we, we worked on getting, first of all, getting our classroom teachers. What do we need for classroom teachers? And then just, we're just working down the, working down that chain of, of filling these positions. And the other piece of it, Amy, is there's also some federal funds in terms of our title funds that will support our social emotional learning curriculum as well. So it's a, putting all the puzzle pieces together. But we, we, we heard you a lot in theory that social emotional learning is a big need, and we see it as a big need, and we're just working on filling those pieces with that.
Okay, so I think the risk of not getting too far into the weeds, it sounds like they're on top of it for me at least, and then we'll just kind of follow up on it and get further along with next year, because that's something.
Maybe we can bring an update, maybe we can bring an update the next school committee that we have, where we're at in terms of what we, social emotional learning, what we've done.
You're getting the message, Steve, that we're really concerned with the emotional state of the kids. I mean, I think that's the bottom, and you guys are the professionals, so I, I'm hoping that you can figure out the best way to do it. So, Paula?
I actually, I, I just had a question going back to rich in person. I was just wondering if where we were regarding what we is going to move? We had gotten closer to a decision as to whether for the fifth grade or the eighth grade, or?
We're still, we're still evaluating. One of the things we're really trying to look at is see if we can still keep everyone on site and be able to work a schedule that allows people to come back through carts to teach that way. I'm not, we're still looking at that. I, I'm not sure we're going to be able to pull that off, but that is one of the areas we're focusing on right now.
So you guys, you're still trying to figure out if there's a way to keep them all at the middle school, is the interpretation there? But I think the, the question I would have as a parent if I was watching now is if it's, if a class is going to have to be at Willard, do we have some sort of timeline, timeline when that announced that we made that? So parents aren't freaking out at home right now?
Yeah, no, we're actively looking at it. I haven't put a timeline in there, but that's one of the critical decisions that we have to be able to make to get, to be able to have this done. I want to also make sure that we're not rushing in either onto a decision or making one in a vacuum either. So it's a balance of trying to, and so, yeah, I would, as Steve mentioned, probably at your, at our next school committee meeting, we'll be able to come back and provide an update around that.
Okay.
I have a couple more things. So when, one question that came up, and I know that it's really far from September, but just something that's come up that, that I was asked about, especially since with, when, at the workshop when we were talking, and then, you know, we were all, I feel like in agreement in a sense, as well as you, Matt, about, you know, staff not having to teach remote as well as in-person, knowing that how stressful that was. And our hope is for that not to happen in September. But I do wonder if the discussion, I don't need an answer, but just for us thinking ahead, is assuming quarantines are still going to happen, you know, let's just say Grace is in quarantine the first week of school. What does that mean? Does Grace then assume the classes that she, you know, was registered to be in? Or I guess that's just a question that had come up, and I was like, oh, that's a really good point. I hadn't thought about that, so just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, so essentially, Amy, you're asking like contingency plans. Like, say next fall, there's another wave, we've got, like you said, quarantines again. That's a good question, actually, I think, so.
We had said that we'd like to just have either, you know, at home or in person to kind of get rid of the hybrid.
At least the quarantines won't be a thing, but, you know.
Hopefully, but if they are, we have, we have the owls, we have the technology. Could a teacher just have it going and a kid watching it from home? Maybe not actively, I mean, it's not ideal, but.
But with rules and parameters that you are only allowed to do that if you're in quarantine, not just because you want to sleep in on a Tuesday, you know?
Has that been discussed at all, Matt, or is that not even on radar yet because you've got a billion other things going on?
No, we had, we've had general discussions. I think we're at the, the idea of really not having a synchronous option. And so that's, you know, we're really working on getting everyone back to school five days a week in person. We are sending out that survey this week that will help guide us a little bit more for information. But, yeah, I think you're going to have something with a quarantine situation, for example, that the student has no control over. And there's going to be ways that we're going to try to do our best to keep that student connected to their academics and their classes. So, yeah, nothing's finalized with that, but we're having preliminary discussions on what exactly that's going to look like and what needs to be put in place to make sure that's effective.
Okay, thanks, Matt. What else, Amy?
So, and, yeah, so just when, when we were on that amazing spreadsheet that Cheryl did for us, when I was, when we were looking at, again, back to the elementary schools and just knowing, you know, where kids are at right now. And then looking at the sheet that you provided us last week, Steve, with the kids, with the numbers of kids with IEPs. You know, when I'm looking at Carl Lamb's numbers, number of students with IEPs, a hundred and two of their three hundred and seventy-five students have IEPs. MCS, sixty-nine of their students out of three forty have IEPs. Willard have seventy-eight students with IEPs out of three hundred and sixteen. So knowing that that many students in each school with individual education plans, I'm just, when I, when you, when on the spreadsheet when I was looking, it seems, it looks like MCS is getting either an additional resource room teacher or a replacement. And then I'm seeing Carl Lamb, a special ed teacher. Is that for resource room? Just because I'm, again, looking at the teacher ratio for the resource rooms and, you know, scratching my head at that, knowing that next year, again, we're back to kind of like trying to recruit. I know that the regular ed classroom sizes are going to be smaller, but I would also assume that we were also knowing that the resource room classes should be smaller as well. Also, when I look at the Sanford Pride School, it looks like kindergarten ed tech one and then an IEP coordinator, but it doesn't look like they have an additional resource room for those. Because a hundred and two students out of three hundred and seventy-five with IEPs is a lot.
But isn't there some difference in the, in, I want to say the severity of the IEP, but the restrictions of the IEP? You could have a kid that has an IEP that's really nothing.
Right, and then some have a lot. So, and I understand that the variations, and Steve addressed that last week when I brought this up. But, you know, also trying to get those ratios down because if you have a student that, for instance, goes to resource room for reading, but then the resource room classroom has got a larger classroom size than the regular ed classroom, that doesn't necessarily make sense.
But is that, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't the kids with the IEPs say four days a week all this year? So would it be safe to assume maybe they're not as far behind as the other kids? And once again, I go back to Steve and everyone, I think, who have been putting a ton of time in on this.
Yeah.
So I trust their judgment on these numbers.
And so do I, but I think we were elected to ask the questions that parents are asking, so here I am.
You're a hundred to three hundred ratio?
Yeah.
I remember, John, when I were in meetings several years ago, beginning of the year, we were kind of amazed that a third of our teachers fallen into the special ed role.
Yeah.
So it fits right into your hundred to three hundred ratio, in my mind, it's.
It was when we were at the high school, and the special ed stayed. It was actually the opening day of school when all the teachers come in. And the special ed were having a presentation, Stacy was going to do a presentation. So all the other teachers left, the cafeteria at the old high school. And Jonathan and I stayed, and we were amazed at how the teachers, certainly the building, all getting back cafeteria.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think, Amy, you bring up the point that we're going to want to make sure we're looking at those ratios. I mean, I, I, I would agree that if you have someone leaving a mainstream classroom to go into a special ed setting and it's actually going into a larger setting, at, like, that's counterintuitive, it doesn't make sense. Those are some things we're going to have to break down and look at in terms of how services are provided and if we do need, if, if there is additional staffing that is needed.
So, safe to say it's on the radar? Anything else? That was all you had, right, Amy?
Yeah.
Okay. Paula, anything in your corner? We're all good? Okay, so let's move on to director's reports. And we have the SRTC update from Kathy. Pleasure as always, Kathy. The floor is yours.
Same here. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight and talk with you. I'm getting my screen up to share with you. Okay, so I trust that you're seeing this?
Yes, we are.
Excellent, okay, great. So, yes, I have a little bit of an update for you in terms of where things are and what's happening at the technical center right now. So lots of texts here, sorry. We just had our National Technical Honor Society induction ceremony on Thursday. It was wonderful, we did do that virtually. We just started having induction ceremonies separately for the NTHS students two years ago. We've done both of them virtually, so we hope the third time's a charm next year. But you can still view that on the WSSR TV website, of course. And it was really neat that we had so many students recognized. And Jen Bartlett, our new NTHS instructor, excuse me, advisor, did a great job of really highlighting things that the students had written in their essays and quoted some of their teachers on matters of character. It was, it was really nice. I've already shared with you, or Mr. Nelson has shared with you, that we had some Skills USA medalists, and our first robotics team did very well recently in their competition, but it's worth repeating. Really proud of these students because, well, we're always proud of them. But also, these competitions were held virtually, which is probably not ideal. It is the situation that we're in at this point. But they did a really amazing job adjusting to competition as it is right now. So we will have some students going on to Skills USA Nationals, which will continue to be virtual instead of actually sending them to Louisville, Kentucky, as we usually do. But we're very excited for those students to have that opportunity to compete once again. We are, as you just discussed, planning for full in-person learning for next year. We're very excited for that. May for SRTC is a month of third-party exams. So our health occupation students will take their CNA exam at the end of the month and hopefully all become CNAs. They're still working on their clinical hours, but the test is a big part of that process. Our welding students have done their American Welding Society test to get their certification. So a lot of those programs are getting into their testing cycle now and certainly by the end of the month because our seniors will start to leave us, unfortunately. And we need to get those exams taken care of to get those students certified. Our seniors typically end through the month of May. Our seniors typically end through the month of May. We have a few schools that will leave us early in June. But, uh, just a few weeks left with our seniors. Our recognition night, which I'm gonna tell you a little bit more about today, will be held on Wednesday, May twenty-sixth, hopefully if no rain. I'll tell you more about that in just a moment. And, um, our step-up day, this is something that we. Brought on quite a few years ago now, maybe five years ago, we saw that there was some. Uh, melt over the summer in students coming to S R T C and we wanted to take care of that because. You know, unfortunately, when students are accepted to the programs. Um, we have to turn down some students and so. If those students decide, oh, they, they don't really wanna come to S R T C after all, it's hard to fill those slots sometimes. So we'd like to get it right the first time and retain those students if we can. Um. Unfortunately, bringing students together who are, have never been in our school at this point. From eight different schools probably isn't prudent at this point, so. We're doing a mixed approach to this and kind of going back to an old method that we use, which is. Having our instructors reach out to their individual students. Um, through letters, through emails. And, um, also offering tours this summer, because I think that's the part that's really missing for these families. A few have already contacted us and said, they've never even seen the building. So we'll be doing tours throughout the summer so that those families can see the program space, see the building. And I think the good thing about that is that building often seals the deal right there, so. That will be a good thing for families to feel more comfortable about their student coming to us. Um, and just give them a chance to see where they'll be coming. And then June tenth is the last day of school. As you know, some of our schools will be ending a little bit sooner. Uh, but we'll definitely be winding down June tenth and. It's amazing to think that already there almost. Our recognition night, uh, as I mentioned, will be held on Wednesday, May twenty-sixth. We do have a rain date because we're holding this at Alumni Stadium. When we looked at our recognition night, we. Were concerned with an indoor option. We've held this, uh, at various performing arts centers before. We have grown year after year. And we didn't wanna stop that growth to the best of our ability at least. So we held our recognition night two years ago in the competition gym, which was excellent. Um, but we were concerned, concerned about spacing, concerned about what the restrictions would continue to be for indoor gatherings. So we've gone with Alumni Stadium. And even with that, we were concerned with the amount of. Guests that our students could have come to this event, so we actually have split the event. Into a five o'clock and a seven o'clock offering. So we have two pathways in each of those times. Which will enable us to have students, um, have more guests attend. It's actually, it's at two right now, because I'm honestly being a little cautious. And hoping that we'll be able to invite more. I know it's probably more popular to go from two to three or four rather than the reverse, which we would never do anyway, but. Um, we're starting kind of conservatively and then hoping that that number can go up once we get a better idea of. How many students will actually attend. Um, so that's what we have planned for our recognition night. We're looking forward to it. Uh, it's a new event for us to do outside. Uh, but we're looking forward to the challenge and having our students be able to come together in person to celebrate their achievements with us. But that's all I have for you actually this evening. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Um, I'll ask the first question, Kathy, in honor, honor of Kendra. Uh, how's the plumbing program looking for next year?
It's great. It's, uh, we have the position posted. I will make a public announcement that I would love to have more applicants. Uh, so if anyone's interested. What a great opportunity to train the future plumbers of the world. Uh, you know, you'd love to come and work with us. It's a great place to work, S R T C. Um, so love to see more people apply to that. Um, and we have a pretty solid list. We've worked with some of our partner. About one of our partner schools, our colleagues in C T E. Who also have started plumbing programs and gotten a pretty clear idea of what, what it is that we'll need for. Equipment, for supplies. Um, but I always like to kind of give the instructor kind of the final nod on that. Um, so hoping to get someone employed so that we can start. Finalizing that program. Uh, but we have a, a space in the STEM wing that we're planning on putting plumbing into. Um, the exciting part is that we have students who have signed up for plumbing and been accepted, so. Uh, Jason Richard, who teaches our career exploratory program, actually did all the interviewing for that, so we thank you, Jason, for that. Um, we have a full program in the morning, the brand new students, so we have, um. We have sixteen students and probably could put a few more in there if we, uh, if we needed to. And then the P M session, what I'm hoping to do with that. Is to actually bring some seniors who are interested in getting a year of plumbing in. Um, that enables me to hire someone full-time, which hopefully makes it a more attractive position. And to kind of keep that rotation of first and second year going. So that we don't run into a year where we have no students moving and therefore can't accept any more students. So we're really excited about where we're headed with plumbing and getting that off the ground next year.
That's awesome. Thanks, Kathy. Anything else, anybody?
Well, are there, are there any programs that are not attracting students that you might think about, um, limiting?
Maybe, uh. The hard part about that right now, Jonathan, is that we're, we're in such a state of flux at this time of year. So we have students who, um, may be looking at their second choice program if they didn't get into their first choice. So every day things shift a little bit in terms of programs that might not be as heavily enrolled. Those start to fill more and more. Um, so I wouldn't necessarily say there are any on my list at this point, but it's something that we carefully look at.
Excellent. Anything else? Nope. Good job, Kathy, as always. Keep, uh, keep up the good work.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, Steve, the floor is yours. Looks like you have a few items, worse.
Good evening. I do have a few items this evening. Uh, first off, I want to start off by, um, talking about our review of our title grants. In the fall of two thousand nineteen. Uh, the federal programs review team at the main department end began a review of our title grants. We are a large recipient, um, receiving over a million dollars, so we are monitored frequently. As part of the review process, we were asked to submit over thirty documents to the main department of ed. The team reviewed those documents and then they sent some of them back. They said, you need to do this, you need to do that. Uh, many of these documents came before the committee, such things as allow plan. Uh, our plan that we use to guide our work with English speakers of other languages. Our Title One involvement policy also came to you and our last meeting, the federal procurement policy came to as well. Um, in addition to that, there are many internal things in terms of our forums need to be updated with that, so it was really a comprehensive review. Um, that I think the department really used COVID to go through things with a fine-tooth comb. Um, but I'm happy to report, uh, we have met all the requirements of the monitoring cycle and so they have closed it out, so that's good news to us. Um, I want to thank Ellie Merrick, who coordinates Title One and our two administrative assistants who worked on the project with me, Deb Samborn and Liz Dodge, and they were. Um, a great help in getting this done, so, um, kudos to them. An update on transportation tonight. I haven't talked to you about transportation in a couple of meetings. Um, start off with athletics. Ledgmere has been able to accommodate our athletic needs this spring. Um, Gordy and the athletic team have tried to schedule contests on Wednesdays. Later in the afternoon, some of them on Saturdays, which has really helped with the scheduling of drivers. Um, we do have a few middle school events that we're continuing to work to find drivers towards the end of the month. Um, but we're working through those, so just kudos to Ledgmere and, um, athletics working together to get that done. In terms of summer transportation, we have started the planning process for summer transportation. Currently, we are working on the high school and middle school routes for the programs that will be at Sanford High School this summer. We are working on identifying some select routes. Um, in South Sanford and over in the Springville end of town. Um, to try to make as many stops accessible to students as possible. Next week, um, Ledgmere will begin work on the elementary runs, runs for our Title One program. And E S Y. At the elementary program, because we identify students individually. We program, so those students will have an individual stop which they'll be assigned to. So there's a little more detail that goes on. In the programming for those programs, just by the nature of the kids and how old they are. Overall, as we look to return to in-person learning next year with five days a week, we are looking to expand our fleet. To allow for social distancing to occur in the bus. Um, and speaking with Ledgmere, the buses are available, ready to roll. Uh, the concern we have will be with drivers and getting drivers that are licensed and ready to driver buses. They are advertising. Um, they continue to add to their driver fleet, um, ongoing. Um, but if anybody out there is looking to drive a bus, we could need you. Um, safety committee meeting update. We met last week for our final safety committee meeting of the year. Um, in the month of April, we had four staff injuries. Um, two minor muscle strains and two food service burns that occurred, um, with the new ovens over at the middle school. The door was closing really quickly. Um, and so Holly has ordered some, um, protective gloves for the food service workers to prevent further, um, burns. And on the student side of things, we had one, uh, student who fell off a structure and broke their wrist. Um, overall, the injuries this year have been down, uh, physical distancing. And fewer students in the buildings are a big factor why we saw a decline. However, I think it's important to know. This past summer, we provided special education, um, training for our special educators with de-escalation strategies. Um, as they work with students, and I think that that has also had an impact, um, on things. In terms of our safety drills, we're wrapping up our fire drills as the school year comes to a close and we have our lockdown drills scheduled. Um, in the next couple of weeks. The next thing I'm talking about is just, um, we'll tie into what Beth is gonna talk about in terms of summer programming. Um, as you know, we have been working with the rec department. Um, to get into their, um, summer programs to, um, add an educational component. We did have an opportunity last week to reach out to the Y M C A. We met with Matt Willett and Andy Arazio. And we're very excited, uh, to expand on our partnership that we have with the Y M C A. And we're looking to set up a similar arrangement with the Y M C A that we are doing with the rec department, where we will hire. Um, educational directors that will work with the programs. To incorporate educational components into their program. Um, we're real excited to make this happen. I think, um, this is a smart way to do it. We're, we're. Working with existing programs to strengthen their programs and also meet our needs from an educational standpoint, so just very excited about that. Um, we've met twice now with the Y M C A. The next step is to develop an M O U. Um, with the Y M C A so we can move forward with that. We have hired. Um, or have recommendations to hire, uh, six folks to come on board this summer. To fill those educational director positions, um, and so very excited about that. And so Beth will continue with, uh, summer learning. Do you guys have any questions for me this evening?
Any questions for Steve?
I think I'll just, sorry, so just a question I had asked at the workshop, but just because this is a different meeting. Um, in the sense of when you were meeting with the Y M C A and the rec, did they talk about, you know, additional funding and grants? For the kids. Who can't afford to, to pay for the Y M C A or the rec program so that they can still. Benefit from the educational program that's going on?
Yep. Amy, that did come up in our conversations. With both the Y M C A and the rec department. With both programs, there, there's an application process and in their application process, there's a scholarship. Attached to that, if families are in need of that scholarship, money should not be a barrier to any family wanting to access summer programming.
Excuse me, John, you.
Historically, yeah, and then given, you know, this year being an off year, historically the Y gives out close to about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Scholarship.
And then. There's some money available, um. The rec has their, some revenues to fund some of their scholarships. And then also what we're gonna look to do is use some of our federal funds to support that.
And hopefully we'll be able to like market it so that families know that, you know, because some don't even look at it. They just know that they can't afford, afford it, so. Can help to kind of share that news that like it's for all kids. And money is not, and it should not be an issue.
A few years ago, we, we put together one, um, with the school department. Um, in the application, we identified certain kids. We had the principals and the teachers identify certain kids. And we actually gave them a week or two weeks, or some cases, three weeks for free. And we bought them bathing suits, we bought blue towels, we bought.
Through the Y M C A?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, we stopped that program, the Kids to Camp program, probably five years ago.
Yeah.
And, um, we had, and again, this year being an off year. Um, it didn't, you know, we didn't do it this year, but that's what we've been doing for the last seven years.
That's awesome.
Uh, Jonathan?
I was calling you, Matt.
Wait, no, Matt, I'm charged with it. Nobody wants, uh. Just for a minute. Steve, transportation. Remember, it's somewhere in, in, in the archives. There are criteria of a, of a student being eligible to take the bus. All the school changes. Have we taken a second look at that recently?
In terms of the walking distance?
Yes.
Um. I don't know if to top my head, Jonathan, when the last time that was looked at. But I can find out.
I think it's worth taking a look. The other is. It would appear a great deal of, a big number of parents are delivering and picking up students, if you more so today than ten years ago. Um. What, what does that do to the number of buses we need? I mean. I know on cold days we'll pick up anybody, but I'm not trying to shun kids and say, sorry, we're not, we're not stopping for you, but. I mean, transportation is expensive and, and. Couple of surveys, how many parents have taken their kids to school and have no intention? Whoever uses the bus. Anyway, just throwing it out there.
No, Jonathan, I, I agree. In terms of that, we're gonna wanna get a good handle. I think when we looked at Ledgmere, we worked from a very, um. To add any buses to the fleet, we were very conservative. Knowing that we have parents that are still transporting. Um, I will say, Jonathan, with the high school over in, um, the new facility. There are a great number of kids that are walking. Um, in that, in that area. Um, but I will get those exact numbers for you.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Uh, Beth, floor is yours.
All right, so I will continue where Steve left off. Um, so I shared with this, this with you briefly during the workshop last week. Um, so what we're, what we're working to do this summer is, we know it's important to keep our students connected. Those that might have been fully remote, um, this year, we wanna make sure, as well as those that were in person, that they still. Um, are able to access some really fun activities that the school department is sharing with them. Um, so we started by identifying the different grade levels. What is it that we wanna be able to offer, um, families and students? We wanna offer in-person activities. We wanna offer remote activities. Um, ideas on things that they can do with technology, without technology. Um, so what we brainstormed and came up with is this sort of beginning brochure. Um, which will be what I will send out to families. And so from here, this kind of gives them a brief overview of some of the things that we have offered. Um, everything from Title One programming to different camps, um, that we're offering for each of the different grade levels. Um, so I'm just, I'll show you very briefly. A family, all they have to do is just click on the, um, grade level that they want. Maybe they have a second grader. They wanna see what there is for information. What we've done is we've tried to pull in not only resources from the school department itself, but from the community. Um, so you'll see, we start with our librarians. Um, and then one of the, um. They'll have a schedule of different read-alouds and activities, um, for the kids on a, a theme that they'll, um, be uploading each week this summer. Um, our kids are currently using, uh, PathBlazer, which is an intervention program that speaks with N W E A and creates a path specifically for each student. Um, for a family that wants to keep the technology this, this summer, their students will be able to continue that path. And, um, that PathBlazer work with no interruptions right through until their next N W E A test in October, September, October. Um, so that's, uh, for math and some literacy that they can continue to work on. Um, Camp Susan Curtis, they wanna reach out like, uh, four Thursdays this summer to hand out different creative art projects and STEM projects. They have them for all grade levels K to twelve. We're going to be offering a read-aloud schedule during lunch pickups throughout the summer. Jenna Daniels, our math coach, is gonna do some fun math games and activities for the kids. I have links here for the Good Old Library and I can show you. The Springville Library has already completed theirs. So if a family, of course, it's not letting me work. That's, that's great. Um. They should just be able to, Google has been a little feisty today, so I apologize. They should just be able to click on that. You can kind of see it right here. There's a brochure. You can kind of see it right here, there's a brochure. Um, and they can see what the Springville Library is offering. So then what I've been doing is what are some activities you can do for inside or outside? Please let it work. And it's not going to work. Okay. So this is going to be an even shorter presentation than we had planned. So what I've done is I've gone through and I found some activities. What are some things that your kids could do, um, outside? Um, it's fun things like playing in the mud, different things to do with chalk, things that are completely free. Um, I found some no cook recipes that, that families can do together. So I just tried to find a mixture of many different activities. Um, the family tech one, I have to say, is my favorite. And I went through and I found some great resources. Families can do virtual field trips together to zoos, um, live presentations at aquariums. They can travel around the world. They actually had a little caught up in it last week when I was, um, I was going through them. So some really fun activities that the families can do together, um, and kind of explore the world around them right from the safety of their home. Um, and then we'll have more information for Title I jumpstart contact information for families. So if they need to reach out to their teacher, um, or a camp counselor, they can just come here and the information will be right here. Um, and then for each grade level, it gets a little different. You'll see when we go to the middle school, and I don't know why it's not working, I apologize. Um, I'll do it this way then. So with the middle school, we add, um, we have STEM camp. Um, Julie Williams is offering a week for kids, grades five through eight. They can build their own website. She's offering a second week where they can go and build their own computer game. We have theater camp and that is already, um, been filled with information, but I'm not even going to try. Here's Kathy's S R T C career exploration information for grades five through eight. It has dates and times, other information that parents might need, as well as band camp. And the same goes for the high school, it's the similar. Um, so the idea is that we'll send this out in the next couple of weeks, just to give parents a, hey, here's a heads up. This is some of the things that we're offering. Um, and then my thought would be to send it out again the last week of school, just to remind families, hey, don't forget, take, take advantage of some of these really cool things we have offered for you. Um, and we'll put it on the app, Facebook, the district homepage. Um, I've already been reached out to by the Sanford-Springville News and they're going to help us present this out to, to, um, families around the district as well. And my goal is to offer it and just kind of remind people, maybe every two weeks throughout the summer, some of the things will be updated weekly. So I want to make sure people know, hey, check back, you're going to find some new and cool things on there. Um, so that's, that's something that I've been working on. So it kind of coincides with what we're trying to do in the in-person with the rec department and the YMCA, as well as giving families the opportunity to continue to explore and learn on their own as families or just individually by students.
That's kind of, um, with like the different camps, so the S R T C camp and the STEM camp and like, are those free?
Yes. Yep, everything's free. Um, transportation will be provided. Once, um, I'm working with the teachers that are going to be offering it and we'll work on signups. So we will be able to find out what students want to attend so that Steve and I can work with the bus company to try to figure out the best bus routes, um, to pick up the students. And then breakfast and lunch will be offered for all of these in-person activities as well.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just want to add, uh, we met with our administrative team last week. And, uh, what we're going to plan to do is all of our students are going to turn in their technology at the end of the year. And that's mainly because we have a lot of warranty things that we have to take care of. There's also updates that we have to do. And then for those families that want to keep their, uh, technology or utilize technology throughout the summer, we'll have an application process where they can come and do that. Uh, whether that is through the extended school year program, Title I program, or if people want to have it on their own, there will be a way after it's turned in that they'll be able to come back and pick that up. So that's a system that we're working on. Originally, we were looking at everyone just holding on to their technology. But as I mentioned, uh, as we look at it with, uh, warranties and equipment checks that we have to do, as well as adding, um, and updating programs for next year. And the idea that, you know what, some families just may be tired of the technology and, uh, want us to have it back. So that's, that's a change that we made since we had the workshop last Monday. And right now our administrators are working on finalizing those turn-in, uh, schedules for the technology. And we're working on the process for people to be able to apply, to be able to use it throughout the summer.
Cool, great. Any other questions, comments, anybody? I think it's a great job, Beth. I think it looks great. You got to get it out to the people and hopefully everybody takes advantage of it. And we can kind of get the kids back to, to socializing. I think that's everybody's objective. Okay, so we'll move on to new business. Uh, we already did item one. Uh, so item two, three, and four is the reapproval of the COVID-19 sick leave benefits, sick bank and compensation schedule. Um, we just need a motion on this right now? There's no new info or anything like that, right?
No, no, no info. This, my expectation would be that this is the last time that we'd approve this. This would take us through the end of the school year. As we're looking ahead to next fall with the idea of, um, the vaccine being available and other, um, changes and whatnot, I don't anticipate us having to have to extend this into the next school year. That's had the conversations I've had with our, um, teachers' union. We'll just be able to want to get out in front of that to allow our, to let our staff know that. But this is, I expect this to be the last approval to help write us, uh, and get us through the end of the school year.
Okay, I'm just going to look them all together unless anybody has an issue with that, just to, okay. I'm, uh, I want to make a motion to approve the COVID-19 sick leave medicine, benefits as presented, uh, to approve the amended COVID-19 sick bank or S F T collective bargaining agreement under Article nine dash sick leave as presented, and to approve the amended COVID-19 compensation schedule for S F, S F T collective bargaining agreement, Article 13 as presented. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Mapes. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous, Matt. So those are good. And then we have new item J five from the addendum, which is the awarding of the Pride Elementary Furniture bids. Uh, so Cheryl, I assume, has something for us?
Yep. Yep, so, um, we had, um, we went out to bid for the furniture for, uh, Sanford Pride Elementary. Um, we, when we brought it back, um, we got, uh, two vendors at a bid, um, but we got three, three actual bids. Cause, um, WB Mason actually did two bids. Um, if you look at the, uh, criteria and what they did is he gave a better chair and desk, um, to actually show, um, which actually became more comparable to the one that Warren's gave us. We, um, looked through the bids, we have scrutinized them. Um, you can see that the memo, I actually went through and showed all the differences. Um, when we got down to it, Warren's and WB Mason two actually were very comparable, except for the Cubbies. Um, the Cubbies are very different in the Warren's bid. Um, they're individual Cubbies instead of having two Cubbies. Um, and we really feel that with COVID, we need, really need to have the individual Cubbies so that we're not having kids trying to have a Cubby next to their friend, um, and trying to keep the social distancing going. So we, we know that the bid for the Cubbies, um, actually is where, um, a large portion of the cost between the two bids are. But we really feel it's important that we have the individual Cubby, Cubbies for COVID. So we're going to pay the additional cost through the COVID money to allow us to get the individual Cubbies that we really need. Um, so we broke it up into two. The first one is for the WB Mason for $72,412 and 12 cents. That is for the, um, desks and chairs because they are the same vendor. So it makes it, you should probably keep those together. And then we did the Cubbies and Shelves through, through Warren's Office Supplies for $115,079.76, which are also the same vendor, so they will match and look alike. Do you guys have any questions?
I think, oh, is that your ring? It's right ahead.
Sorry. When you, when you say, I'm trying to envision the Cubbies that you're talking about. Cause when you, when I heard you, I'm like, are Cubbies needing to be three feet away and socially distanced? So what we're doing, what they are is, um, kind of think of a locker and you, how sometimes you have a locker at the bottom and a locker on the top. And it's two separate lockers. Same thing, they, the Cubbies are the same way. There were two, um, spots to put a coat, two spots to put other stuff. And they weren't as big because we were thinking you need to have more room for the, for, you know, winter stuff. Um, uh, backpacks and everything. And the smaller Cubbies, I don't think would fit everything and would not also make it so kids might try to be side by side or one above the other. I want to be with my friend Maggie, I could just picture. Um, and so that, I could see that happening with the double Cubbies. Um, so to make sure they don't do that, the individual Cubbies allow us to space them apart, the kids apart, so that their stuff isn't with the other kid and they're keeping their social distancing when they all have to go running for their backpacks at the same time.
It's more like, I'd be more concerned about like.
I'd be concerned about the boots dripping down from the one below.
Yeah.
Another good example, yep.
Um, questions, other questions? Uh, the one question I would have, I've always a proponent of going local as much as we can.
Yep.
What was the cost difference if you went with Warren's for everything instead of splitting it with WB Mason?
It was $60,000.
So $60,000 more?
Yes.
You know, with them to go with Warren's?
Right. And that's why we felt like if we at least, um, separated the two items, we felt like we're still, um, uh, following the bid process and we can say that, I mean, it's the Cubbies are really the biggest piece. And that's where the biggest cost difference was between the two, two of the bids. So we really felt like that piece was really important.
So just so I, I have a right, Cheryl, so you're saying if we went with Warren's for the desk and chairs, it would have been $132,000 for that desk and chair section?
So, um, the total bid for Warren's was $202,000. The total bid for, um, WB Mason, and I'm going to only use the second one because that was the one that has the comparable chairs and desks, uh, was $142,135.58. So it was just under, um, $60,000 difference. When we break out the Cubbies, yes, the Cubbies are more expensive when we go, when we split them out. But we also feel we need those for the, to meet the guidelines for the C, CDC and COVID.
It, it just surprised me that it's that far apart. Is it a, is it a comparable product from WB Mason? Is it all spec this time?
Yep. I mean, it's just a completely different product. They were about the same size, but they really were a very different product.
Are we also ordering, I, I know you're ordering neat chairs, um, and for the wiggly kids, are, are the chairs, oh, give a little wiggle, like for them to move? Or are they just like the ones that don't? Cause I just think about all of my ADHD kids and how they benefit from a little movement, what I do here today.
They are similar to the ones, we bought a bunch during, um, the beginning of COVID. Um, and we really liked those chairs. We got them for, um, CJL got a bunch. Um, the middle school got a bunch. I think the high school got a bunch. And everybody seemed to like those chairs that we had gotten. So that's what we were trying to emulate is keeping stuff similar from one school to the other. And so we, that's, the chairs and desks are similar to the ones we bought during the COVID process that everybody liked. The desks are cool because they're like a triangle and they actually can connect together and make like a octagon shaped desk or table later.
Oh, yeah.
And cool. Yeah, cool.
Okay, so I, I was just looking closer at the specs, Cheryl. So I guess I understand now more, like WB Mason doesn't have this wire book rack, which was $7,000. And it looks like the, the bracket gauge is a little bit lighter. So I assume the stuff from, uh, WB Mason is durable enough to last, but what we're looking at doing, right?
Yeah, actually Warren's actually checked that out because she was interested too. And she said, no, they're comparable. So she, you know, she agreed. She's, she understood why we were going with the desk and chairs with the other brand.
Okay, like I said, I just like locals, so we got to ask the question, but I understand, that's huge.
There was a lot of conversation that the construction, um, moving committee actually talked about because of that.
Well, thank you for considering local, that's, that's important to me also.
Um, any other questions or comments? Okay, then, uh, we need a motion on this, right?
Yeah, you have two motions to make, please.
Be right, okay. Um, I'll make a motion to award, uh, the goods and services agreement to WB Mason for $72,412 and 12 cents as presented. Do I have a second? Second for Mr. Rue. Any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. I'll make a motion to award the goods and services agreement to Warren's Office Supply for $115,079.76 as presented. Second for Mr. Rue. Any further discussion?
Uh, just real quickly, I do also want to agree with both of you that I, I'm glad that we do, uh, some of this one of you staying local.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, um, all in favor? All in favor, that's unanimous. Good work, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Okay, Kay, old business, we have none. Uh, resignations, Superintendent Nelson, the floor is yours, I'm Mr. Muster.
Okay, resignations to announce. Uh, Samantha Brink is our career exploration manager. Megan Brown, grade four teacher at MCS. Caleb Burke, band teacher at Sanford Middle School. Mark Camery, longtime math teacher at Sanford High School. Um, Suzanne Dukowski, library media specialist at Willard. Amos Dunlap, ELA teacher at the high school. Athen Neil Gload, uh, special ed ed tech at Willard. Mary Labby, food service. And Alainan Tomlinson, science teacher at Sanford High School.
Hey, best wishes to everybody as always. I did want to highlight, uh, Samantha Brink, we even know because she's done a ton of work in that position. She kind of created it and she's a huge loss, so best of luck to her.
Yeah, uh, that is a big loss and, uh, we are happy for Samantha. I think she got an excellent opportunity, uh, where that was probably too hard to pass up, uh, in some regards. Uh, but I'm also, um, you know, with, at the same time, we wish her nothing but the best. Um, I have looked out, uh, as, we have not posted her position yet because I am still doing some, uh, checking around and researching to see if there are any adjustments that we may want to be able to make with that, uh, program. Um, and getting some other, uh, job descriptions from some other, uh, area schools and similar positions just to make sure we're maximizing this and using this as an opportunity.
A prudent course of action as always. Uh, staff appointments?
Uh, Linnea Randall, special ed ed tech two, Margaret Chase Smith School. Uh, she's been on board, uh, since, uh, April as a replacement and that will go through the end of the year.
And welcome to Linnea. Uh, staff transfers?
Sure, we're, uh, Ann Arth, Ann Arnold, moving from a grade two teacher at MCS to a Title I teacher at MCS next year. Uh, Linda Bolduc, moving from, uh, Sanford High School Food Service. Um, increasing her hours, uh, from five a day to 6.25. Uh, and another food service, um, transfer Andrea Eaton, going from a sub over to the middle school food, food service personnel, five hours a day.
Excellent, okay, now we're into nominations. We have the list for the second year probationary, which was not amended.
Yep, no change to that. These are people who were hired, uh, prior to this school year, uh, and are finishing their first year. And, uh, we're recommending that they go on to a second year probationary.
Glad to have them staying on. And now we have the list that is the third year probationary contracts, right?
Don, we do have to take action on, on that first.
My bad. I'll make a motion to approve the nominations as presented. Do I have a second for Mr. Rue? All in, any discussion? All in favor? This is where you can bring up, like, I don't like this person, we shouldn't do it. Does that ever happen? I can't even imagine.
I hope not.
By the time it comes to last. Yeah, I know, really. Um, okay, so now we have the next list, which is our third year probationary contracts, which was amended from the original.
So we're not originally made the mistake of nominating them for continuing. No. That is not part of the statute that came into play recently. This is nominating these professional staff to third year probationary. That was what was in place when they were originally hired to work for the Sanford School Department.
Excellent. So I'll make a motion to approve the nominations as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Amy. Good work, Amy. At least Amy's paying attention. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Okay, and now we're on to that broken out list, which is the people that are actually being nominated for continuing contracts. Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve these nominations as presented. Do I have a second? Second for Mr. Rue. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? That's unanimous.
I do have a professional staff for an administrative contract to recommend this evening. I am happy and proud to announce that Tracy Hallissey is being nominated as the principal for Margaret Chase Smith School. Starting July one, she will be replacing Principal Chuck Potter, who will be off to retirement.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the nomination as presented. Do I have a second? Second for Jonathan. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Excellent. We had Paul who was a representative of all that hiring committee. So we did have somebody there. Okay, that, that's that. Policies and procedures, I see none. Is that correct? Her future agenda. Anything anybody wants to put out there? Are we going to already have on the table? Let's get to the list and we can have another one. And then calendar announcements. We've got the city council. Oh, they're voting on the budget for the city council meeting tomorrow, Matt? Is that what that is?
I don't think it's an actual vote. That's our, I don't think so. I haven't connected with the city or Ronnie to get an update. Do you know anything about that, Cheryl? Is it the city budget or is it a, another public hearing that they need to have prior to the referendum?
I think they pulled off the city budget, didn't they, Matt?
You're muted, Cheryl.
I believe it's the city side only.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they pushed that off. So anybody interested in the city side of the budget, that's more than I would know. Yeah, we're going to do a W S S R Zoom meeting for the steering committee of the nineteen. Our next regular school committee meeting is the twenty-fourth. S R T C recognition night will be the twenty-sixth. Is that the right date?
May is twenty-seventh.
Yeah, is that right?
Twenty-sixth is right.
It'll be Wednesday though, not Thursday. Wednesday, the twenty-sixth.
Oh, is that what's throwing me off? Okay. Anything else for the calendar, Matt?
We do have a leadership team meeting with the city this Thursday at ten. And we do have negotiation, we do have negotiations scheduled for Wednesday. We'll start with food service, ed techs, administrative assistants. And then we'll also move right into the continuing our work on the teachers contract.
Excellent. Anything for anybody else? Okay, then I will look for a motion to adjourn. A motion for Mr. Rue. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? We are officially adjourned, everybody. Have a great night.